Lori, it's seven oh five. Should we go ahead and start?
You should.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. At the time, and the time is approximately seven oh five. My name is Phil McLaughlin, designee at this hearing for the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, MCDOT. Here with me this evening to conduct this public hearing is Joe Tamanna, Acting Chief for the Division of Transportation Engineering, DTE, for the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, and Ms. Rebecca Park, Transportation Unit Manager of Planning and Design Section of DTE, and Project Manager for the Heritage Triangle Trail, as well as Mr. Suresh Pohkaral and Mr. David Harris, real estate specialists of property acquisition section. Mr. Tamanna will be providing the information and details regarding the project. Tonight's hearing is being recorded. To obtain a copy of the recording, please visit the Heritage Triangle Trail webpage after five PM tomorrow. Please note, your video camera is turned off by default this evening. To reduce the bandwidth of the meeting and to maximize technical efficiency, we request that you please do not turn your video camera on. Likewise, your microphones have been muted. Once the testimony portion of this hearing begins, those who have signed up to testify will be called on and unmuted when it is their turn to speak. If you have not signed up in advance to testify but wish to do so, please raise your hand by clicking on the reactions button at the bottom of your screen, and then clicking Raise Hand. If you are joining us via telephone only, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad. Please wait until the testimony portion of the hearing to raise your hand. You may raise your hand at any time during the testimony portion. We will call on you to provide your oral testimony and unmute your microphone when it is your turn to speak. Written testimony and comments may be submitted as well and will be considered with the same weight as oral testimony. Following the testimony portion of this hearing, we will hold a question and answer session. You may also raise your hand to ask a question, or you are welcome to type your question in the chat, the icon for which is at the bottom of your screen. Tonight's hearing is being held pursuant to Section forty-nine dash fifty-three of the Montgomery County Code. The sole purpose of this hearing is to present the project and allow you to provide comments and suggestions which may affect final project design details. Your comments should be focused entirely on the Heritage Triangle Trail project, which is the topic of this discussion. All interested parties are entitled to be heard at this hearing. However, the testimony portion of this hearing is not a forum for dialogue, questions, and answers, or cross-examination. Please direct your remarks to the Heritage Triangle Trail project that is a subject of this hearing. If comments stray into areas not related to the project, I will ask you to refocus your comments on the subject project. Following the conclusion of this public hearing, the record will remain open for one month till without any person who was unable to attend this hearing an opportunity to have their comments included into the public record and be fully considered. The official closing date by which all comments and testimony must be received is Thursday, December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six PM. Submission should be emailed to rebecca park@rebecca.park@montgomerycountymd.gov or provided via the online comment form on the project webpage. The comments must be received by the close of the hearing record on December twenty-eighth. After the hearing is concluded and the record is officially closed, I, as the hearing officer, will thoroughly review and weigh all comments and testimony submitted to the public record and will make a recommendation to the Director of the Department of Transportation, Brett Conklin, for his decision as to the final detailed design of the shared use path. And now, to discuss the Heritage Triangle Trail, I give you Joe Tamanna. Joe?
Thank you, Phil. Good evening, Mr. McLaughlin. Ladies and gentlemen, the subject of this evening's public hearing is to consider the design for the construction of a ten-foot-wide shared-use path with a grass buffer along the following roadways in Sandy Spring. The east side of Dr. Bird Road, MD one eighty-two, from Olney Sandy Spring Road, MD one oh eight, to the current terminus of an existing shared-use path located approximately fourteen hundred feet south of MD one oh eight. The east side of Norwood Road, from north of the driveway to the Adventure Park at Sandy Spring to south of Edna Road, where it will tie into an existing trail approximately one thousand seven hundred feet south of Adventure Park. For your convenience, we have posted several downloadable displays that aid in the visual description of this project. We will review them as I describe the project. Display A is a project vicinity map of Heritage Triangle Trail. The vicinity map shows the location of the shared-use path relative to nearby community attractions such as schools, heritage sites, historic sites, and the existing network of pedestrian and bike facilities. The project's proposed shared-use path is shown as a red dashed line on this display. The total length of the new shared-use path will be approximately three thousand one hundred linear feet. Existing bike and pedestrian facilities are shown as dark and light green lines. The M dot SHA planned shared-use path is shown as an orange line. Its preliminary design was completed this past summer. The county's Norwood Road shared-use path is shown in a blue line and is currently at the seventy percent design stage. Displays B one through B seven show the Heritage Trail project's scope in more detail. Displays B one through B three show improvements on the Dr. Bird Road section. Displays B four through B seven show improvements on the Norwood Road section. Each display shows the aerial view along with its typical section. The proposed shared path and repaved roadway are shown on the plan in gray color. The purple line around the path represents the limits of disturbance. This is the area that is expected to be impacted to construct the shared-use path. The limit of disturbance includes the shared-use path, the grading, and space to be able to construct. The light gray hatching represents the portion of a driveway that is proposed to be reconstructed during construction of the path. The green shaded areas are grass buffer, and the red X represents a tree for removal. Display B one. Beginning at this intersection of MD one oh eight, Olney Sandy Spring Road, a ten-foot-wide shared-use path with a six-foot-wide grass buffer will be constructed on the east side of the road. New pedestrian streetlights will be installed in the grass buffer. A new wooden fence will be installed two feet from the back of the shared-use path. The roadway surface will be repaved. Display B two. The ten-foot-wide shared-use path continues on the east side of Dr. Bird Road towards the Sandy Springs Friends School to the south. The grass buffer between the shared-use path and the road varies between six feet to thirteen feet on this section. New pedestrian lights will be installed in the grass buffer. A new wooden fence will be installed five feet from the back of the shared-use path. The roadway surface will also be repaved. Display B three. The ten-foot-wide shared-use path continues on the east side of Dr. Bird Road, connecting to the existing shared-use path at its southern end. The existing shared-use path was completed by Sandy Springs Friends School in September, two thousand and twenty. The shared-use path along this section of Dr. Bird Road will be constructed in flexible, pervious pavement. This section of the shared-use path will also have a grass buffer with varying widths between six feet and thirteen feet. New pedestrian lighting will be installed in the grass buffer. Display B four. A ten-foot-wide shared-use path is proposed on the east side of Norwood Road from the southern end of the existing shared-use path adjacent to Adventure Park towards Edna Road. A thirteen-foot-wide grass buffer and two-foot-wide shoulder are also proposed between the shared-use path and the road. Although it is not shown on the plan, lighting will be installed in the grass buffer adjacent to the Woodlawn Manor property. MCDOT and the Parks Department recently reached an agreement to add timers to the lighting. In addition, lighting will also be added to the currently unlit segment of the existing shared-use path north of the Woodlawn Manor property. The two rows of wooden fencing will either be reset or replaced depending on their condition. Between the two fences, a V-shaped grass ditch is proposed. Grass swales and bio-swales will be constructed along Norwood Road to reduce the impact of stormwater runoff from the proposed shared-use path. Display B five. The ten-foot-wide shared-use path and the grass ditch continue on the east side of Norwood Road towards the south. Lighting will be installed in the grass buffer that varies in its width between fourteen and seventeen feet. To convey the runoff from the shared-use path, a storm drain system is proposed underneath and along the grass ditch with the outfall across to the west side of the road. A new bio-swale is proposed on the west side of the road to treat the stormwater. Display B six. The ten-foot-wide shared-use path and the grass ditch continue on the east side of Norwood Road towards Edna Road. Lighting will be installed in the grass buffer that varies in its width between fifteen and seventeen feet. To convey the runoff from the shared-use path, a storm drain system is proposed with the outfall across to the west side of the road. New bio-swales are proposed on the west side of the road. Display B seven. The ten-foot-wide shared-use path and the grass ditch continue on the east side of Norwood Road to the intersection with Edna Road. The new bio-swale continues out to Red Door Country Store on the west side of the road. The concrete ramps will be installed on the southeast corner of the intersection of Norwood Road and Edna Road. New ramps will be constructed on the traffic island at the southwest corner of the intersection. New crosswalks will be paved across east of Edna Road and south leg of Norwood Road. These ramps and crosswalks direct pedestrians and bicyclists to the existing trail along MD one eighty-two, Ley Hill Road. The project justification. Dr. Bird Road and Norwood Road, MD one eighty-two, between MD one oh eight and Ley Hill Road is identified for a shared-use path treatment in the two thousand and five Olney Master Plan. Dr. Bird Road from MD one oh eight to Norwood Road is identified for a side path in the two thousand and eighteen Montgomery County Bicycle Master Plan. Heritage Triangle Trail will link current pedestrian facilities along Norwood Road and MD one oh eight, as well as provide critical connections to historical heritage tourism destinations, including Olney Theater, Sandy Spring Museum, Underground Railroad Experience, and Woodlawn Manor. The project was awarded MHAA Capital Grant for final design of the project in July, two thousand and nineteen. Costs and assessments. The total cost for this project is currently estimated at two point eight seven million dollars, including engineering, land acquisition, site improvements, utilities, and construction. There are no properties which are considered to be specially benefited by the proposed improvements. Therefore, no properties are expected to be assessed. Exhibits. As previously discussed, several exhibits are incorporated into the public record binder for your information and consideration. These exhibits include, one, the Office of Management and Budget Bikeway Program Minor Projects, P five zero seven five nine six, Heritage Triangle Trail, ninety-five percent design plans, written testimony regarding the Heritage Triangle Trail proposal provided prior to this hearing, Washington Times newspaper and online advertisement proof, Montgomery County News release dated November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and Go Montgomery newsletter, all advertising this hearing, list of attendees to be added following this hearing, a hearing transcript also to be added following the hearing. Project-related data and files can be downloaded from this virtual hearing platform. Alternatively, you may contact Ms. Park to request digital copies of the proposal files at rebecca.park@montgomerycountymd.gov or access the files on the project website. The files will continue to be available to the public until the record for this public hearing is officially closed. As previously stated, here with us this evening is Ms. Rebecca Park, Transportation Unit Manager and Project Manager for the Heritage Triangle Trail, Mr. Suresh Pohkaral, and Mr. David Harris, real estate specialist of Property Acquisition Section. In addition, we also have Ms. Stacy Barefoot from the engineering consulting firm RKNK present at this hearing. We will be available after the hearing to answer any questions regarding the design aspects of this project. Now, I will turn things back over to Mr. McLaughlin.
I apologize. I have myself on mute. Thanks, thanks, Joe. We will now hear testimony from those in attendance who wish to testify. To testify, please click on the status icon on the top menu bar to raise your hand. This is the icon that looks like a person with their hand raised. Once given speaking rights, please clearly provide your name and address for the record prior to beginning your testimony. Lori, are you going to be calling the individuals?
I will indeed, and we have people signed up to testify through their registration. First, we will hear from Peter Kin. Is Peter Kin here tonight, please? Okay, let's move on to George McFarland. If you, let's see. Do this really quick. Okay, if George McFarland is in the audience this evening, you can unmute yourself. Okay, how about Laura Shertler? Is Laura Shertler here this evening? Okay, would anyone like to raise their hand? You can click the reactions icon at the bottom menu bar, and then you click Raise Hand. Okay, Phil, I don't know. I don't know that anybody wishes to testify this evening. Oh, we do. Let's hear from Stephen Medford.
Hey, I just wanted to just briefly just voice my support for this project. I currently walk this trail daily. I was on it this morning. And I just think it would be a great benefit to have the extensions that you outlined, so thank you so much for your effort.
Thank you, Stephen.
Are there any in attendance who have who have individual questions that are not necessarily testimony? If there are, please raise your hand.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, can somebody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, perfect. Okay, I was actually trying to log in on the Zoom earlier on my computer, and I was having trouble. And maybe that's why a lot of participants aren't able to log in. But I'm sorry, my name is Maria Bowers, and I am a resident along one of the existing trails, the one that extends from Dr. Bird Road heading up towards the Adventure Park. But I just wanted to say that I am also in support of this, and I am looking forward to hopefully being able to walk down Dr. Bird Road towards the Olney Ale House and also being connected to the Olney downtown area via this trail. So I'm really looking forward to that.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you.
Yes, you heard you.
Okay, just making sure you all can hear me, sorry.
Yes, yes, we can. I do want to apologize for the email. I had to restart my computer this morning several times, and I fear that the link did not cut and paste properly from the draft. I am aware that the numbers that you can type in, just the link, not the length, but the numbers, does work. So if any of you are in contact with any of your neighbors that are trying to get in, they can just type the numbers in that were provided.
Okay, I think I tried that as well. I'm actually doing this via phone, so that's the only way I was able to connect, but that's good to know. Hopefully, I can share that with them.
Yes, and the recording will be on the website by five PM tomorrow, but I am truly sorry. And thank you for letting, I'll be much more careful in the future.
Oh, no, no, no worries. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Looks like Susan Milner would like to speak. Susan?
Hi, this is Chris and Susan Milner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we two were unable to get into the meeting using the link in the email that you sent out, but we were also then able to kind of join the meeting by typing in the meeting ID and the password, so we had the same experience. We live here in Sandy Spring, and I just want to voice our support for this project. I did want to ask if the, we're also part of the equestrian community here in Sandy Spring, which, as you know, is a vibrant part of the community here in Sandy Spring. And I did want to ask what considerations had been given in the design of the shared-use trail for horseback riding, in particular along the segment from well, like the Cozam property down to Edna Road.
This is Rebecca Park with MCDOT. So we are aware that a lot of the folks in this area own horses and they're equestrians. And the feedback we received was that they would like to see more grass buffer for the horseback riding, for the horse riders. And that design is still in works, so unfortunately, we are not able to show the hundred percent design tonight, but we're still refining the design to accommodate the equestrians.
Okay, so I hear you say that you are accommodating equestrians in the ultimate final design with some sort of a wider grass buffer.
So right now, we have like some sections, we already show like five feet of offset from the fence to the back of the shared-use path. That will be the area that horse riders can use. We will look into see what other accommodations we can make. But again, unfortunately, what we showed tonight is ninety-five percent design and we'll try to, you know, see what we can do to accommodate this equestrian's use of the shared-use path or the grass buffer along the path.
I see, so you're not committing to it. You're just gonna see what you can do. I just want to be clear.
Yes. Your understanding is correct, yes.
Okay, because when we first talked about this with you guys in March or February of two thousand and twenty-one, we also raised this as a concern, right?
Yes, I wasn't the project manager at the time, but I listened to the recording of that, yes. But it's not really, how to say, it's we haven't dealt with this for shared-use path, so we're trying to figure out how to accommodate the equestrians for the usage of the path and the grass buffer next to it.
One time, I sent the design of another shared-use path here in Sandy Spring, which was approved by, you know, was approved by you guys, that did have an equestrian consideration. I think I sent that to Ms. Patricia Shepherd. And so there's a section of, there is a section of a shared-use path that is here on the north side of one oh eight that was designed with an equestrian consideration. So there, and that was, I'm assuming that that's in your records, and that's what I sent on to your office after this meeting as a suggested template for how you've done that in the past.
Yeah. If you could please provide me that information, I appreciate that. Pat Shepherd retired a year ago. And I would like to read more information about that.
Okay. And, but yeah, I mean, just from my perspective, there may be others in the community that have different perspective, but, you know, five or six feet wide is a sufficient buffer to be able to ride a single file in the grass between the pavers and the fence. Two feet is not wide enough to ride a horse between the pavers and the fence, you know, so if we could make, if you can if we could make, uh, if if you can, uh, I would I would request specifically that you design at least a five-foot wide buffer between the pavers and the fence. Um, and I understand, and frankly, the the portion of the trail between the Cozam property and uh the the theater is is not one, to my knowledge, that anybody rides on. Uh, but then the portion of the of the trail from the Cozam property down, well, actually, from the existing shared use trail, uh which ends at the uh at the Adventure Park down to uh uh to Edna Road is what I'm specifically talking about. Um, you know, it's it's ridable today because of the, because it's basically just a big grass buffer between the road and the fence. And you know, if you if you build it with only like a two-foot buffer, then it would not be ridable. And and so I specifically request that the section of the path between the Adventure Park and Edna Road be constructed so that it is ridable with at least a um at least a five-foot uh buffer between the path and the and the fence.
Okay, ordered into it.
And I'll forward you the uh the shared use path design which has been used uh in the past uh with a with an equestrian buffer that, like I said, is uh on the north side of one oh eight.
Okay, thank you.
And just so I'm clear, could you uh uh is this, this is, okay, I have your email address right on the screen here. Okay. Um, but yeah, we're we're definitely in support of the project. I walk this section most it most days. Often times I see Stephen Medford out there watching, walking this section, but uh most days. And so uh we would love it if it were um if it were finished and walkable. Um, but we would, uh, I and and other members of the equestrian community would um would not be happy if it uh were turned into something that was sort of not accessible to equestrians. Thank you for um considering uh for for hearing my my input.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll hear from John.
Hi, um. I also wanted to uh let you know that I'm a resident of Llewellyn Fields subdivision, which is um along our, one of our conservation areas is uh aligned with the the late Layhill Road and the bike path that goes from uh Layhill from uh the Norbeck Extension uh up Layhill to Norwood. Um, so I have frankly tried to bike from our subdivision to Alney and that's the stretch without the uh without the bike path is very hairy for a elderly biker to navigate. So I I'm very much in support of this extension and making a continuous pathway uh for our neighborhood anyway, to be able to get uh into Alney without uh any safety concerns. Also, I wanted to say I was glad to see the swales that were uh included in the plan that was presented uh earlier. Um, I think you call them bio swales. Anyway, you you probably know that there, in a heavy rain, there is some heavy uh water accumulation on uh Dr. Bird uh from the Red Door Store up to sometimes almost all the way up to um Sandy Spring Friends School. Um, so that's my comment. I did have a question in in the, and I may have missed it, so apologies if I did. Was there or is there going to be a need to um encroach on any privately owned property in order to install these proposed extensions?
This is Rebecca. The answer is yes. We'll we'll acquire um easements from both um private and public properties. Um. So there are about a total of nine properties that we need to acquire easements from for this project.
I see. Okay, and is, may I just ask, is that primarily between the um um, the new junction point on uh only Sandy Spring Road and um where the path ends?
You know, this is a primarily the nor- uh the Dr. Bird Road section of the trail.
Okay.
Yeah, from only Ale House down to the south where the end of the uh Dr. Bird Road portion of the Heritage Triangle.
Oh, that, uh, of course, Dr. Bird down to almost where uh Norwood uh starts. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you very much.
No problem.
Lori, doesn't, does it appear as that we have anyone else?
I apologize, I was muted. It it does not appear that we have anyone else.
Okay, well, seeing that we've uh answered all the questions here, uh, we will conclude this hearing. The record will remain open for one month. Comments and written testimony would be due by Thursday, December twenty-eighth at six P M. Additional written written testimony may be submitted by email and must be received by the close of this hearing record. Submissions should be sent to Rebecca Park. Uh, email address is Rebecca dot park at Montgomery County M D dot gov or via online via the online comment comment form on the project webpage at the following link, which is visible there. I don't want to try to read all that out to you, but that's available um in um that's available to you. Um, thank you uh for participating in this public hearing. It is now concluded.